Our meeting, we're just in executive session to discuss potential litigation. Before the meeting gets started tonight, I'd like to call for a moment of silence to honor the victims of the census crime down in Newtown. Thank you. Thank you very much. And also during the administrative part of our report, the superintendent will address actions that she had taken on the day of that horrendous crime. At this time, we'll ask for public input if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard. Seeing nobody, well, seeing somebody, but nobody wants to be heard. Next, we'll move to our student report, and tonight we have Josh and Jose.
Well, we have a lot of announcements to do. Wrestling team placed third at the Wakefield Tournament on Saturday. They had eight place finishers between two times. Track had a fundraiser meet at Reggie Lewis the other day, and they collected toys. There was teams from Massachusetts as well as New Hampshire. Basketball won on Friday against Newburyport, and the girls' basketball team fortunately lost. Hockey has their home opener at Renning tomorrow night against Marion, and they won one and lost one so far. Boys' basketball also has their home opener against Penn Tucket tomorrow night. Swim lost to Masco on Saturday night by eight points, which was a good performance by them. Track has a meet at Andover this Wednesday at 6:45. The holiday concerts take place on Wednesday at 7:00. Student Council is hosting a fundraiser at Papagino's this Thursday from 4 to 9. Junior class hosted the Winter Ball on December 7th, and sold 186 tickets and it was very successful and what I've heard a lot of people have thought. Slam calendars have been sold, and I guess that fundraiser is over. Students had a half-day on Thursday for ministry purposes. Alliance against intolerance is collecting money for respawn drive. They're collecting Christmas gifts as well as donations. Freshman class is collecting money for nursing homes for the holidays. Interact went caroling through the Alulee Homes across the street last weekend. And chorus is doing choral grams at lunches and Power Block, which are available for purchase. Interact is selling candy grams as well for the holidays. Alliance is also collecting money for the tragedy down in Connecticut. And today, this morning, we had a moment of silence, and a couple words were given by Mr. Bernard, and that was over the paces this morning. There's a Spanish luncheon tomorrow with, we're having a visitor who's staying with a local family come in, and the Spanish foods, and it's gonna be great Spanish pasta.
And if school okay or not?
Um, yeah.
All right, if they don't leave us any school.
No, no, no. I was just gonna talk about last week, and I take Spanish five honors, and we read a story in Spanish about a Mexican family who was working around work, and they basically just discussed the hardships that immigrant families have. And we had a debate the following class about our views upon illegal immigration and, you know, what should we do with all the illegal immigration, the border disputes and all that stuff? And we kinda came to a consensus about we don't really wanna, we don't approve of illegal immigration, but we think we, as a nation, should make it easier to gain citizenship and everything.
Any questions for Josh?
I have none, but that was a nobly expressed.
That was very good.
A nicely delivered message I've heard on that topic for a while.
Josh, you may have a future in politics.
Yes.
That was really well stated, Josh.
You must be independent, 'cause they can't tell whether they're Democrat or Republican.
Well done, well played.
And I know Josh is a senior and is involved in the college admissions process at this time. I know you've bought into many schools. Which schools have you got?
I've accepted the Temple, Penn State, and Woodward.
Excellent.
That's great.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, so Josh, you're free to, really, thank you very much. Okay, next, we're gonna, since we are at the high school rally, obviously, we're going to move into the high school presentation, and we will start off with John Bernard, high school principal.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Leffler. Welcome to all of you. It's nice to have you here at the high school for your school committee meeting this evening. We do have a nice lineup of presentations for you this evening. We are going to go in order to the agenda that we have here, which is a bit altered from that which I think the superintendent may have had, just a couple of very minor changes. But the first presentation will be from one of our art teachers, Mr. Brett Kunze, who is, you might recall you, in your wisdom, adopted the digital photography class to be offered here at the high school this year for the first time, and it is a very popular class, and we're running three sections of it. So I asked Mr. Kunze if he would be willing to come tonight and show all of you, along with one of his students, some of the work that's going on in this, in this class. So, Mr. Kunze, it is all yours, I can help you.
Yep, there you go.
All right, there you go. Well, thank you for having me. No strange to the sum of the school committee, but this will be easy, 'cause we're not negotiating salaries. It's very easy.
Exactly.
Well, it's always so much fun.
Right.
All right, well, digital photography, it's a new course that was introduced. Jillian O'Leary's is back, and we'll introduce her. She was awarded Art Student of the Month today for both her work in graphic design and visual photography. Kate Pappas was gonna join us, but she was sick last week and couldn't join us, then she nobly got Emma Stanislawa, substitute for her, who forgot she was double booked and couldn't make, so we just have Jillian with me tonight. Digital photography, this course serves to interview students to photographic concepts with a concentration on the digital realm. The fundamentals of camera control as well as rudimentary photography composition are a focus of study in this course. Students will be familiarized with digital photography as well as the manipulation of their digital photos. Photographic applications and careers, career opportunities will be explored. Display of student work has been of overriding significance. Students will be encouraged to find applications for their newly learned skills within their academic community. This year, the first year that digital photography has been offered at North Running, is the first year that digital photography has been offered at North Running High School. Student response to this course offering was overwhelming, with 178 students choosing it during spring registration. In response to logistic limitations, because I'm only one gun, only juniors and seniors were allowed to take this course this year, currently 77 students are enrolled in three sections of digital photography. Students use Nikon D31 and D300 DSLR cameras provided by the school. Some students use their own personal cameras as well. North Running High School currently has 14 Nikon digital cameras that are amassed over the last three years. Thoughtfully planning for the future began before this course was actually offered by one really smart guy. Students have spent much of the, students have spent much of the autumn taking advantage of the pleasant weather to take photographs in and around North Running. Student work has been on constant display in the halls of North Running High School. The displays are often updated to showcase the evolution of the students' skills and achievements. As you can see, and hopefully you saw some of them on the way up to this room, there are many displays around the school. Students are learning how to manually control the cameras. Additionally, compositional guidelines have been a constant area of focus. Students have also started to become familiar with post-production enhancement to their photographs using Adobe Photoshop. The results have been sensational, and positive feedback from the North Running High School community has been plentiful. Here are some examples of the student worth, these ones are exhibiting depth of field, photos featuring the control of the shutter speed, and mind, this one wasn't taken during school time. It was a moving car, quite honestly. It was very creative nonetheless. Photos featuring framing, and some North Running icons that everyone surely recognizes. Photos featuring the rule of thirds. Photos featuring lines. Expressive portrait photos featuring post-production enhancements. So these were not only taken, but then changed after the fact. As you can see, color limited in that one, and they're kind of amplified at the same time. Social documentary photography project is something that we've started this year with this whole new course as well. Students in all the digital photography classes have been documenting students' life in North Running High School with all forms of cameras. So I've actually given permission to use their iPhones and other cameras on occasion. As, we only have the 14 cameras and 77 students, so to really capture the student life, I've allowed them to use different cameras to do this. The end result will be a display at the year-end of the best photos. Results are being shared on a monthly basis through the North Running High School's new newspaper, The Hive. It's a collaboration with the school newspaper, The Hive. The pages that appear in the newspaper real are like such, with the different photos exemplifying students' life at North Running High School, and I've asked them to capture different aspects, not just posed life, but what really happens in and around school that can be anything from sporting events to just those casual moments, as we see doing homework on the sidelines of their sport, 'cause there isn't enough time having fun at the pep rally, and different sports, and just beautiful sunset there. So it's really documenting the whole life, not just those posed moments in life, but all the different moments that aren't posed. Also, we have the Photography Club that gives many students who are unable to take the course some exposure to digital photography. The club meets almost weekly to learn about the photographic process, practice skills, and explore their interest in photography. The club also runs fundraising events and plans on taking photo-related field trips in the near future. One of the fundraising ideas that we did do was the Hornet grams just before the pep rally, where kids would have their picture taken with the Hornet mascot, and then got these, got the chips of Biden the next day. We plan on Valentine's Day doing customized Valentine photographs with a little more notice and more customizable with messages and so forth. But unfortunately, the Valentine's Day is a half-day, so we may have to deliver them the day before. Digital photography into the future. We look for more connections to share our students' skills with the community, research additional places to display student work throughout the community, add to the inventory of equipment, and possibly develop additional advanced courses in digital photography. If you'd like to come up, she's gonna show you a little bit of her photographic work. If you have any questions for her, as she doesn't really have a prepared speech, so.
Brad, a couple of suggestions. I would think, you know, I know space is sometimes limited in the transcript, I don't think both the transcript, but especially the patch, would love to, would love to show some of these pictures. I can even see them doing it on a regular basis. You know, they've taken a football game, they've got 20 or 30 pictures. I can see them, you know.
Oh, absolutely.
Pictures of the week, and you get five or six or 10 different, different images to them.
Is there a connection person to that?
Yeah. And I also think there might be some, I mean, I know these are still pictures, but there might be something to do with NorCam. You know, we have a little segment when we ever get our, when we ever get our talk show on, that we've been talking about for ages, that still hasn't developed. But there might be an opportunity with the cable, cable access to it.
Most of the cameras take video as well. They're pretty high-end cameras.
Now, Jillian, have you used the digital camera before, or?
Um, yes, I have, but I didn't really know, like, how much you could actually do with the camera until I took this course.
And also Photoshop too, which is the after effects, so, very nice.
All right, how many kids in the club? It varies, as many as 20-some meetings, and usually at least a dozen. Yeah, so they wanna learn, and I think I'm doing more meetings than any other club advisor.
Oh, that's the next time we're on.
So like, for hours, and everyone else in.
All right, we'll see you in three years.
But 178 kids.
That's all huge.
Well, 77 currently.
Right, but the 178 kids who want to take it, and I think it's a great course, because you mentioned, you know, employment opportunities moving forward, and if you wanna get into photography, or journalism, or whatever, you need to know how to really handle a digital camera and take quality images.
Absolutely.
And learn to handle layers.
Exactly. Photoshop's all about the layer, right?
Yeah, exactly. No, this is great. I'd love to see, the other thing I was thinking is, you know, the frame shop in town on Route 28? They often have community-type exhibitions or shows.
Yes.
I bet that they would be willing to do a show, maybe even sell some photos and make some money for the, to buy more cameras. Just an idea.
Looking at all those suggestions, what about like a Pinterest site?
Pinterest, oh, yes. Pinterest site for.
Probably got a link, though. You get a lot more good stuff like that.
Absolutely. This is great.
I have my sister Pinterest. I tried it.
Any questions? It's great. Thank you, Jillian, for that.
You're welcome. Used to the smart board in the eye, I think I'm out, I can't see the screen, but that doesn't work that well.
Jillian, thank you.
Thank you. Should we find where you?
You're gonna help.
Our next presentation is from Ms. Brown, who I think is a familiar face to all of you. Claudia, thanks for being here tonight. As I think you all know, Claudia is the curriculum specialist for Health and Phys Ed, but she is also the faculty advisor to our new American Red Cross Club, which was a doctor last spring. You might remember Nick Phillips gave a very good presentation to all of you, and that club has been truly a really wonderful club here in a very short period of time, and just as they're getting set up, Ms. Brown and Mr. Leffler, I thought I would share with you an email from our American Red Cross liaison. She spoke to us about the club's activities so far this year, and she notes that the club is, I'd like to read it to you here, she's quoting from the email, she said, "I am amazed and proud of the work that Nicholas and his club are doing. Although they were just formed this school year, they have already proven themselves to be one of the most active and philanthropic Red Cross Clubs in the eastern Massachusetts region. I am very glad they chose to become a part of and support the American Red Cross of eastern Massachusetts." So that was just part of a longer email, but I think it was a very appropriate acknowledgement of the work that they have been doing. It's been outstanding, so. We have half a dozen or so students from the club, but I understand they're making a grand entrance, Claudia. I'm not sure what that means exactly, but.
Gee, love chocolate. We bought it last week.
I bet, I'm gonna argue with Mr. Kunze about club meetings. I just want it to be bigger, Mr. Jake says it's bottom right, but I don't see that. Oh, no. I was ready.
This never happens with overhead projector.
Yeah, the $10, you never, yeah, the blackboard.
What did you call those things you put on the overhead projector? The transparencies? Microfiche.
There it is, there it is. Yes, okay. Thank you for waiting. Popcorn will be served.
The American Red Cross of North Running High School was founded this year, and already has three student members. Our chapter is 99% student run, and as a club, we have several strong leaders who support group goals and teamwork. We would like to take a moment to introduce you to those leaders.
So, the North Running High School American Red Cross Club is a student organization whose objective is to engage high school students in service to their own communities. Our club focuses on giving back to the community, leaving it safer and better than it was before.
This is a picture of the entire club during one of our meetings when we were wrapping gifts, well, stuffing stockings for soldiers.
Our mission, we strive to prevent and alleviate human suffering through volunteerism, generosity, teamwork, and creativity. Every member of our club is dedicated to helping out less fortunate people in our local community.
These are some of our accomplishments that we've reached so far in the year. With Operation American Soldier, which is based in Motto Town, we stopped over 600 stockings, each filled with various items, such as food and clothing and all other items that are required, and these stockings are being sent over to soldiers that are actively serving in Afghanistan.
We also volunteered to wrap gifts up for free at the Barnes &amp; Noble in the Prudential Center in Boston. So we did two days there, two Saturdays, and then here at the school, we sold pins for a dollar each. And every pin we sold vaccinated one child from measles. And we also raised over $1,000 to support veteran and active military service members from the school and around town.
As for our future goals, we're required to do four activities by the youth program director, but we plan on doing many more than that. For instance, up on the screen, we're gonna plan on making emergency kits in our community. We're gonna be participating in the Avon Walk for Cancer. We're gonna be participating in the Walk for Hunger. We're gonna, next month, we're doing youth food pantries, as well as Boston Shines event, which we all go to Boston and clean up trash on sidewalks and whatnot.
That's it, Troy, say something.
Is that meat?
Is it meat or Play-Doh?
It's meat. Yes.
Whatever you prefer.
I definitely wouldn't have approved that slide.
Any questions or comments? You ought to be really proud of yourself, that, for how short a period the club has been in existence, you've accomplished more in, I think, did we approve that this year or late last year?
Last month, just start this year.
Right, start this year.
It's only been the last few months, yeah.
So it's only been in operation for a couple of months. It's incredible how much work you've done, right?
Audi members?
Yes.
Most on show to meetings?
Oh, yeah, every meeting, every meeting there's at least 35.
In the garage. I'm telling you, it's amazing. And every time I turn around, there are packages coming in from these kids, they're just amazing.
This is too good, what's the catch? What do you get from this?
I've been trying to teach you.
Are you getting extra credit? Are you getting community service credit? I mean, this is unbelievable, that you would get body kids to show up and just.
And they're so self-styled.
Well, how do you, how do you, you reach out to, so for the local activities, do you reach out to the different community groups, say the elderly? I noticed, I saw the youth food pantry, so the food pantry, the elderly, Christian Community Services, all those other groups, churches, et cetera. Is that how you determine what you're going to do for local activities?
Right, well, we work with the Red Cross Youth Organization, and within we kinda plan our events for the year, but we also acceptably also, for example, we're planning on meeting with, also those on the list, 'cause I recently found out, but we're meeting with veterans in a veterans hospital, and we're planning on spending some time with them and buying some gifts and, yeah.
I think it's great how much you're focused on veterans and people serving in the military. That's fantastic.
What's a youth food pantry?
A youth food pantry is where we go in, we don't necessarily collect the goods, but we go into a food pantry where it's all collected, and we just help sort it and get it shipped out to different locations.
I'm just curious, what motivates you all to do this? Because you're obviously the leaders of this group, and I think it's awesome, but it's a self-selecting group to actually wanna help other people in this way.
If there's a catch, tell us.
See, we don't campaign for what we do, so, but Jerry thinks there's an incentive, so. But I'm just wondering, why do you like doing this? I mean, it's such a, it's an awesome undertaking. It's not for everybody. Public service is not for everybody, so I'm wondering what you're, why you're doing it.
Well, I believe that by taking action for yourselves, that's not, not only the best way, but it's the only way to influence others, to help take action in that community. And by setting an example, we can really help get all the other students involved in activities like this.
That's great. I've never seen a group like this, ever. I've been teaching a long time.
I think it's fair, Mr. Bernard comes in with proposals, maybe to these different clubs, you never know. I always ask the same thing, what about participation? How many people are gonna participate? In the last club, we had 20 or 25, and this one has 5, so that's great, it's well worth it, and I'm glad that Mr. Bernard proposed it and we approved it.
And as I said, I think it's something that makes the high school, and it's something for the high school and the community to be proud of, so you should be proud of that. So, thanks.
Mrs. Brown is an advice.
The best.
Really? I'll talk to her privately.
That's the best. We'll keep on this, and I'll do this for my. Jake will now demonstrate safety rule. Really? So you don't crash?
Hold the plus, all right?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's get this signed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as Mr. Leffler again helps get the next presentation, so I think you all know Mr. Rosa, before Mr. Rosa has, in No Good Dego is Unpunished, he, a few years ago, brought to me the idea of introducing to our school the Naviance Program, which I think you all are familiar with, is a college and career exploration program. Well, over the last few years, each year, a new module has been introduced in that program. So I feel badly and asking Mike to come back to another night meeting, but in the end, I do think it's important for you all to know what the district has invested in Naviance and for the community to hear about what we are doing and how it's making our students more marketable in their college application process through the program. So this year, Mr. Rosa led the introduction of the Faculty Recommendation Letter, being online and part of the package that goes out for each student, the electronic package that goes out for each student to the colleges and universities to try to apply. So it has been very well received, it's, I think, kind of the, I would say it's a very contemporary way in which we present students' application packages to those schools to which they apply. So, Mike, I thank you again for taking your time out tonight. I know you have a little bit of a presentation for the committee and for the community, so.
Thank you, yeah. Thanks, everyone, for having me here again. If I, if I had one complaint, I think I've done this three or four times now, and I always follow this dynamic student group, and it's like, now here comes the boring guy, and I'm gonna talk about something. So one of these years, we'll have to look at the agenda and switch it up, but just, Mr. Bernard gave me a nice intro there, and just to give you a little more historical perspective, about, gosh, it was probably about eight years ago or so, I spoke in front of the school committee about this program, Naviance, and we had it just for about a year at that time. And it's primary focus then, and the company itself has expanded, and along with it, you know, it's expanded the different things we can use it for. But at that time, it really was a college-only program, and that's still its sort of main focus, but we were using it to track college admissions statistics and data, and to sort of study trends in college admissions, specifically how they retained a North Running High School kid, so we were able to look at all the places they applied, and they would report back to us the outcome. back to us the outcomes of their applications, and it was just obviously a really good tool for us to use with future classes as they came down the road. You know, and then fast forward, like Mr. Bernard said, each year, we've been able to add a few more modules as they've added them, and we've been able to set them up and implement them. So, last year, I don't know if you remember, you know, too, too much from my presentation last year, but the two big things that I presented on last year was the implementation of Family Connection, which was really the module that allowed parents and students to view what we were viewing. So, when they were going through the college search process, they could look at, you know, sort of current trends in admissions, and unfortunately, a lot of schools only get more and more selective, and, you know, they can, they can watch those trends. The other thing we implemented, which actually was just the Family Connection, we've had up and running for about three years now, the other thing we started last year was the eDocs module, which was just fantastic for us. That allowed us, the guidance department, to send transcripts and student letters of recommendation and any other materials that needed to go to the colleges electronically. So, it not only expedited the process for our students, but we began to realize some pretty significant savings in terms of postage and materials and man-hours putting all these together. In any given year, we're processing, you know, somewhere around 1,000 total application packages, and then we're sending first-term grades and mid-year grades and final reports, so it's a big undertaking. So, we began using that last year, and that was just fantastic. So, this is just, just to tell you what you're looking at here, this is sort of a screenshot of where parents and students log into the Family Connection website. They can either come right to the website by entering the correct address, or there's a link off our guidance page on the high school website also. So, as Mr. Bernard mentioned, this year, one of the first things we did was, we set up the program so that teachers could begin sending their recommendations and other forms that were required electronically. So, just like we were doing, they now can log on. So, right at the beginning of the year, one of the first faculty meetings of the year, we held a training session with the teachers, walked them through the process, and they're up and using it. The good news is, is they can use it for every Common Application school, so that's nearly 500 schools now. And then any school or, you know, post-secondary institution that uses the DocuFied system, that's just another company that, you know, facilitates documentation coming from a high school to a college. And I don't know the exact number, but that's, that's actually about double the number of Common App schools. So, we're somewhere in the realm of at least 1,500 schools where we can send stuff electronically, and now our teachers can too. This is, I want, I want to start showing you the different modules we've added. So, if you kind of look at the, you know, the tabs here, we have the five different tabs across the top of the page, and this is what a student sees when they log on to Family Connection. I'm gonna skip over, I'm not gonna talk about the Colleges tab, that's the one I typically talked about in other years. But now this year, the new tabs are the My Planner, the Careers tab, and the Courses tab. So, just to show you, you know, right in the My Planner tab, this is part of what they're calling their success planning, and we've begun utilizing this. So, students can do things like, they can log on and use, if you look at the colored sort of sub-tabs here, they can use the Goals tab to set and track goals for themselves. They're the, it's the SMART goal module, where they can set, you know, specific measurable, attainable, you know, sort of using the acronym for SMART. They can, they can set goals and, you know, fill up tasks that they want to, you know, use to accomplish the goals, et cetera. So, students can use that when setting academic or personal goals for themselves. The, the tab I really wanted to show you here was the Tasks Assigned to Meet tab. I'm gonna skip one page forward. This, I think, is gonna be a really useful tool for us. What we've been able to do is set a list of tasks for each grade level. So, this is an example of what a freshman might see when they log into this, this section of the website. And we can say, you know, you know, we're gonna suggest that, you know, in your freshman year, you join one school-based activity, or maybe you start building a resume. We, we talked to our freshmen recently about this, and we told them, you know, you might want to use this feature not to build a resume so you can go off and apply to, you know, your corporate job right now, but more to use the feature, there's a resume feature in here, to start tracking your activities. Because in four years, you know, everybody, colleges and potential employers and scholarships are gonna ask you, what have you been involved in during your high school year? So, this might just be a nice way to track it. And I think that's sort of the overarching sort of goal of this, is to, so that when the student gets to senior year, they won't have to be scrambling to do all this stuff. They will have done sort of different things that, that helped them get ready for the transition after graduation with each year. So, you know, we put a few documents here for them that we've suggested that they review, easy ways to succeed in high school, a four-year plan for making the most out of high school. So, we're just able to set tasks each year for the students. This is the Courses tab, and what a student can do with this is, we were able to sort of define this tab, and we first, we uploaded all the courses that we offer here at North Reading High School. And then what students can do is they can, using this framework, the North Reading High School Graduation Course Plan, they can go in and create as many course plans as they want for their four years here, or for whatever time they have remaining here. So, you know, if a student was, wanted to design one, if they were gonna, you know, go off and go to business school, maybe like mom and dad want them to, they can design sort of that path. If they want to, you know, pursue their passion for music and go into music performance, they could design, you know, different courses they want to get into their schedule by each year. The thing I like most about this is it let us set up a framework that they can set up plans, but they have to meet our graduation requirements. So, you can't just make up a crazy plan, you know, and ignore, you know, our four-year graduation requirement in math or English. So, it sort of guides them through that process. I'll show you a quick view of what, what it looks like in the end, sort of. There's a lot of different places you can go with it, but you'll notice, you know, student had to, over here in the, in the left column, the student had to select, you know, their four English courses, and then they get a check mark that they met the graduation requirement in that area, and working on down. This view shows, you know, this student chose their four math courses. It's showing that they, you know, you've picked your four credits in math, so you've met the graduation requirement, you're not missing anything. They would tell the student, you know, you forgot a fourth math course if they did. And then over here on this side, you can see sort of in the screenshot, I couldn't get the whole thing on the slide, but, you know, it shows what the student picked for Grade Nine, a list of their Grade Nine courses, a list of their Grade Ten courses, and then there's a few different views they can go and look. And again, they can, they can really do this as, as much as they want. If, you know, they can go in and include the courses they just completed, say, as freshmen, and then, you know, make their plans from there. So, we've been introducing the students to that a little bit, I'll explain how. Let me just show the Careers tab here for a minute. This is one I'm really excited about having added, too. Students can use this tab, there's a variety of research tools where they can go in and research different careers. In the area, the area sort of lower here, what are my interests? Those are three different career inventories that students can take. So, you know, I don't know if any of you ever completed these, but, you know, you go in and, I'll talk about actually the Cluster Finder one, because that's the one we've already been using with the students. You know, students go in and enter information about their interests, their activities, you know, what types of courses they like in high school, some of their personality traits, and it takes all that information and gives them suggestions as to what types of sort of clusters of careers might fit, you know, be, fit their personality. So, that's, that's a very short one. It takes students only like 15 to 20 minutes to complete, so that, that can be a good thing. And then they have some more, I guess what I'll call intense ones that take a little longer. But we, over the last two weeks or so, we began meeting with freshmen in what we've called our Freshman Guidance Seminar. So, we spent a 78-minute block with groups of freshmen of about 18 to 25 students through their regular freshman seminar class, and we began introducing them to this program. And one of the things we have every student do is complete one of these Cluster Finder inventories, so they can just start thinking about, you know, what they might want to do after graduation, and it's something that can be reset. We told them, it's not gonna tell you what you should be for the rest of your life, but it might just get you, you know, thinking about it. I'll show you the, this is sort of the results that a student would get, so it gives them sort of their scores in each of the different cluster areas, it gives them their top three cluster areas, and then students can break it down to as small, you know, as they want, right to, instead of just clusters of jobs, they can then break it down to like very specific jobs. So, you could go from like hospitality, tourism, and then a subcategory of that, one would be like lodging, and one would be restaurant management, and then you can go from there. And this, this will just give you a sense of what the student can find on a very particular job. So, this is an occupational therapist. The students boiled it down to this. You can see, you know, they can click on the different tabs to get what, what knowledge and skills are important, what tasks and activities might I do on a daily basis as a, as an occupational therapist, how much money might I make? Always an important one. And that's really interesting. It breaks it down by state, which I think is good, because sometimes our students always used to look at like the national average per career, and it doesn't pay that well. We would tell them, well, in Massachusetts, it would pay more, because the cost of living's a little high here. They can, you know, down the bottom, you can see they can watch videos, you know, short, like two-minute clip on, on the particular career. So, that is the Career tab. So, here's how we've been, you know, not only have we been picking up these modules, but we've really expanded access to Naviance in general this year. So, in the fall, and I think it was about mid-October, we sent a letter home to all members of the freshman, sophomore, and junior classes. Our seniors had already had access to this, starting their junior year. And that letter included a code for both a parent account and one for a student account for, for each family and then each child in the family. And then to, you know, sort of get our freshmen and sophomores interested in using this earlier, we, we started hosting those freshman seminars I mentioned, and we're gonna schedule some sophomore ones for in the spring. But we gave the students an opportunity to create their accounts, so virtually every freshman does have an open account now. We showed them, well, you know, what's in Family Connection, we showed them the tasks, you know, these are the things we would suggest you complete each year, and we gave them that opportunity to complete that interest inventory, and we'll do something similar with the sophomores. Juniors and seniors, we've always hosted junior and senior seminars, you know, to get them ready for the post-secondary planning process, so we'll continue to do that. We focus a little bit more on the college and scholarship search features, how to utilize that admissions data I talked about that we've been collecting for about nine years now, how to use that when building their list of schools, and we go over with them sort of the brass tacks of the process, you know, how do I request transcripts? Which we are using Family Connection now, that we're, we're all electronical with that. Students request that transcripts go to schools through their Family Connection account, and they request their teacher recommendations through that account too, so teachers can send their materials electronically. So, that's how we're sort of trying to expand it and, you know, get students used to using this as early as ninth grade, so they're using it as a planning tool, and hopefully we'll see the, the benefits of that in a couple of years. So, that's my, you know, that's my presentation on where we are. I love if anyone has any questions at all, it's certainly...
Questions? That's a great tool, right?
Yeah.
To us in the relationship, your grades?
Yeah, sure. Okay, but go ahead, yeah, question.
I had a recommendation, why not start in the eighth grade in the spring?
They're probably, you know, they're...
It's interesting to the freshmen, because freshmen get blindsided, you know, they're going to school, and it's just a bigger school, and they're worried about the seniors in school and all that, when in reality, you should be looking at this thing and going, oh, what am I doing the next four years?
Pretty early on. Yeah, there is some, there's some availability to, you know, the, the company itself has been making this a little more available to, like, you know, do, do middle schools want to start using this?
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, run to the middle school
Yeah.
in, at the end of the semester, in the springtime, and say, here's your accounts. This is what you do, start looking over, over the summer.
Yeah.
Start becoming, looking at some of the clubs, and here's your accounts
Yeah.
your freshman year, so they're not focused on, you know, am I gonna get beat up by a senior?
No, they're, yeah, focused on the good stuff. It could help with the transition, too, I think, yeah. Yeah, we're really proud that we've been able to sort of fully implement all these modules. I know a lot of communities are sort of chugging along, and, you know, every, well, I won't say everyone, a lot of the communities, you'll see our neighborhood communities are using this, and they're using mainly the college feature, but we want to keep getting going, but it's sort of what they call the success plan, you know, the, the academic planning tools and all the other stuff that is, there is just, it's amazing, the potential. We're still just, you know, scratching the surface, I think, with the different things we can do.
I don't think you can ever start too early getting the students to think about this.
Yeah.
Because the junior year's coming up pretty quickly.
I know. We hope it provides sort of a hook for students, too. I, I was kidding with the freshmen, but I said, now you remember, if you, if you took the career inventory and you just came up with architecture, and on a Tuesday night when it's snowy out, and you're doing your geometry homework, maybe you can say to yourself, this is gonna be important to me, you know, someday. So, it just provides that, like, you know, that goal, you know, why, why am I here? Where do I want to go so that I can get, you know, to the next stage? So, that's the idea.
It's great, and I think it's important that we're using it to as full an extent as we are, because these kind of tools, and especially for the, for the teachers and for the administrators, it makes it much easier. And forget about saving $500, $600, or $1,000, whatever we're saving on, on postage, it's the time, because once they learn the system, and, and the colleges are gonna all, the colleges are gonna expect this.
They, they are. You know, we started getting letters a couple of years ago, like, hey, you know, there's some new systems out there, let's start studying, because they want...
It makes it easier for them.
Because admissions counselors just have a laptop now. I don't think there's folders anymore. They just read everything.
And you go through that process now, and a lot of the schools, the kids are, there's no more big, big envelope, small envelope. It's at seven o'clock on December, whatever, you can click on the link, put in your password, and you'll see whether you got in or not. Kind of eliminates a lot of the, you know, anticipation, but, you know, it's, they're there right away.
Yeah, I think our feedback from the teachers has been great. You know, like you said, they're getting used to it, but it's saving them a ton of time, you know, without having to stop that below.
I'm just excited that kids are gonna be able to use a tool where they're gonna learn how to use technology, because most software is web-based, and this is a web-based software.
Yeah.
And they're gonna learn how to do it and, you know, think critically about it. It might get some students excited about IT.
Yeah, yeah.
It also gives you a very, because I have an account, my tutorial, literally was 20 to 30 minutes, it was not, it was not all that involved, it was very easy to pick up, but it gives a nice inventory for the student of where they are in terms of what's been submitted, so there's no, there's no potential for something to be lost or not received in the mail, and it's all itemized, and it's indicated on when it was submitted, and it's, it also gives you an indication that it's been received. It's, it's, it's actually, it's the one, this year's been the one where I've had the most practical involvement, because I get asked to write letters of recommendation, but the other years, it's really been more of the guidance, student guidance, and parent focus, but it's, it's been an excellent tool. And Mr. Rosa has spent, I will have to applaud his inordinate amount of work on this, it is not an easy occupation. Around everything else that's going on, he's done an outstanding job, and he has the power to bring this about, so, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Don't go away, because you also are here for, if you want something done, you give it to a busy person, right? Mr. Rosa, Mr. Lefretian, as I think you all know, are chairing the, co-chairing the Accreditation Steering Committee, so, I thought it would be helpful for you as a committee to get a little overview of, of the process and where we are as a school right now in the midst of the self-study, preparing for our March 2014 site visit, so. That's next on your agenda.
You guys proctoring tests, I was going to...
Yeah. No bubble study of that. No bubble, number two test.
You can, I do have an extra, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
John, before they start, so where, where are we now? I mean, we had, we've had some issues, some questions, some, not probation, but we've been told we had to do some things by me asking in the past to correct.
Yeah, sure. Very standard in where we stood as a school from the, from the 2003 visit. It's very typical, and AJ is gonna walk you through the process of what it means to, once the, once the visit occurs, and what then the obligations of the school or the community are following that. But it's typical that, when I, when I came here as the principal in 2003, the site visit had just occurred that spring, I received the report, I think, probably about my first month on the job, in July, and from there, there were reports to be filed, but that's very typical. It's very typical that there be progress reports, there's a, there's a two-year progress report to be filed, a five-year report, but they couldn't be...
You're giving away our presentation.
There could be special reports to be filed, which we have in the past.
Right.
So, yeah, we, we were never in any position to not continue our accreditation, but we did have a number of obligations to fulfill, but that's pretty typical. So, gentlemen, you want to...
So, you have, you have a number of handouts, and a couple of them will be referring to directly. The booklet is a big piece of the work that we've been doing to prepare for the accreditation process. for the accreditation process, uh, as a, you know, as, as a component of it, but also a really instrumental piece of, uh, just better instruction and, uh, better teaching, uh, and a better way to track student learning. So while it's a, it's a necessary piece of what the NEASC organization's looking for, it's also very good practice. Um, so that, that is really a central piece here. You've got a copy of the PowerPoint and, uh, you have a copy of the, uh, statement of core values, beliefs and the learning expectations with some highlighted, uh, language in there and we'll get to that, uh, maybe.
So this actually, in, in talking about sort of the, the ten-year cycle for, uh, NEASC accreditation, this, this slide outlines it well, uh, just to give you a sense of sort of where we were and where we are now. Um, so the pre-self-study report sort of in the, in the bottom left there is a report that was really filed by Mr. Bernard. Um, like it says, it's the pre-self-study report, so it's just statistics about our school, our faculty, our student body, et cetera. And then we quickly moved into the, um, the self-study period, which really started late last spring for us in many ways because we started forming the steering committee and then each standard committee, which we'll, we'll talk about a little bit more. And that self-study period's going to essentially takes about a year and a half in terms of a school year, um, because we're gonna, um, we're in that now and we're gonna be going till March of 2014 when we have our evaluation visit, um, which takes place over about a four-day period. And then, um, as a result of the visit and, and the, uh, the visiting teams, you know, report and requirements, uh, or reported to NEASC and then NEASC sort of findings on the report, we'll have our, like we did before, our two-year report follow-up and our five-year report follow-up after that, so.
Uh, you know, the, 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 the big picture, uh, you know, to simplify some of the language is, you know, are you doing what you should be doing and is everything going in the same direction? Does everything make sense? Does everything jive with what you say you're doing and how you say you're, you're instructing the students? There are some embedded themes in the, uh, standards, which we'll get to in one minute, but the, the embedded themes are here, you know, equity, collaboration, uh, the personalization of your instruction and of the school culture, uh, the student, the student engagement piece, uh, of course, all with this, uh, idea of the performance at the, at the core. Uh, you know, as a part of a lot of these components, we'll, we'll see, you know, formative assessment, we'll see data teams, uh, we'll see common assessment, certainly the formative assessment pieces, the, the book that you're holding. Um, and, uh, you know, while we try to encourage students not to be totally focused on, did I get an eighty-five, did I get eighty-eight, did I get a ninety-two, that, uh, the rubrics there that, that, that are designed to explain the instruction are a better way to chart, for the students to chart themselves, where, what are my strengths, what are my areas where I need to improve? And that's that formative piece that, uh, that we're speaking to, uh, much more these days in education as a whole.
So here's the slide for the, you know, the seven standards, which are part of the, you know, self-study and then the visiting. The first, the first four standards are what they call teaching and learning standards and then the, uh, the five, six and seven are the support standards. So, you know, we, we all received, um, guides for each standard, every member of the different committees has a guide for each standard. And each standard then sort of has a subset of indicators. So if you, you know, here's, here's the indicators that we think you should look for to show where you are in terms of the standard. Are you, you know, exemplary, are you, you know, the, the different sort of rating categories? Uh, so we have, um, which we're gonna show, uh, we have a committee for each standard. There it is. Go ahead and sort of-
Yeah, so, uh, thank you. So, uh, each, each standard has a committee. Uh, there's a student representative and a parent representative on each committee as per the guidelines of, of the NEASC organization. The steering committee, uh, is kinda listed on the far side. I know it's a little, uh, small, the print up there, but, uh, each member of the steering committee serves as a liaison to one of the standards committees as well. Uh, and I think, you know, early, early on, this, this goes back to Mr. Rosa's point that in the, in the spring, uh, we really, you know, started laying the foundation for, for our work and, uh, you know, so far, things have been very good. The standards committee, uh, sorry, the steering committee has, you know, generated some great questions for us to look at now in anticipation for our self-study and you'll see some of those, um, some of the evidence of that in, in sample agendas that we have. Uh, but the parent feedback and the student feedback and the committees themselves has been excellent. Uh, so, you know, overall, I think we're in a very good place.
A couple of our student representatives, yeah, two of them, I noticed, were on the, uh, the Red Cross, uh, club. Um, so just sort of, you know, condensing that, that original graphic, the, the circle of the, uh, NEASC process, you know, is basically the three phases, the self-study, which we're in now, devaluation and, uh, you know, the follow-up. So we're gonna talk a little bit more about each, each phase of that.
So in the self-study, the committees are dedicated to the indicators defined in the standard. Uh, this, all of this information is on the web. I was gonna kinda flood you with, uh, with handouts and I thought, you know what, maybe I'll just, I'll try to keep it light. Um, and, you know, within that component, uh, right now, the committees are, are gathering evidence, analyzing it, evaluating it. We're very much in the collection process right now. We had, um, uh, the Endicott College Survey as a, as the, one of the primary components of the whole, uh, self-study. That information is due in very soon. We at least have the, um, the percentage of, of the, uh, the, the representatives that took it as the parents and as the students and as the faculty and you'll see that data very quickly. Uh, I know you're aware of the sixth professional development days that we've got dedicated to at least this twelve, thirteen school year. We're gonna need some time in the fall. I think the, um, the recommendation from NEASC and our liaison is George Edwards, uh, who, interestingly enough, uh, is an old football coach, so he's a, he's a guy I think that really gets it. Um, his recommendation was, don't, uh, you know, don't, uh, be in a situation where you haven't given yourselves enough time in the fall. We've got seven reports to vote on and approve and these, this information is due to us in December and you haven't, you haven't really approved the report yet. And that's gonna take a lot of time. So, um, we'll be, we'll be hopefully meeting with you at some point in the spring to talk about setting some more dates aside, uh, in the fall as we, uh, really prepare in the, in the final days here before the, uh, the spring of, uh, 2014.
This slide is meant to, you know, give you just an idea. This was our last, um, professional development day gift with NEASC and just to give you a sense of the type of work, um, that, that we do on those days. Um, you know, student dismissal on those days is from eleven o'clock, so some time is allowed for lunch. Um, this past time, we then gathered together as a, a faculty to have a presentation or a view of presentation that, uh, Mr. LaPrenta headed up on those, uh, on our learning expectations and the rubrics that are included in those booklets. It was, it was, it was kind of a check-in, you know? How are teachers utilizing these? What are, you know, we had a couple of teachers, you know, that we thought could give really good examples of how they're integrating the twenty-first century learning expectations and those rubrics into their curriculum and how they're sort of melding the, the content of their curriculum with, with those, uh, learning expectations. And to talk a little bit about how do we wanna continue to use those and, um, integrate them, you know, right into the, uh, into the classroom for each teacher to be using. Then we did break up into our seven different standards committees and, um, NEASC is, is very organized and they do give you sort of a timeline for what you might wanna be doing each time you're getting together. And this was really, uh, a big part and probably this half-day, uh, probably the next are gonna be big, uh, data collecting days. So we were able to get together, look at each indicator. I think some committees, you know, every committee goes about a little different, but a lot of committees, uh, broke down into teams of maybe two and three for the different indicators, uh, for each standard. And we began going out and, and, you know, getting, gathering data. So I know like there's a lot of data that's needed for guidance, so, um, I was able to set myself up in guidance to provide different people with, um, data and some of you may have received, um, some, uh, requests to be, you know, sort of interviewed for the process. So we began, uh, doing that, putting out, um, invitations for those people that we need to talk to. Uh, so that, we did a lot of that and then we got back to gather in our standards committees to talk about what we were able to find, what we need to find, who, again, who we need to, uh, get together with and, and interview. So, um, and that brought us to the end of the day.
And, uh, just before I get to the next slide, I think, uh, the, certainly the NEASC, uh, message and certainly one I think that we, that every school, uh, receives is that it's, it's the journey. It's the self-reflection, it's the self-study. Uh, when you take that time to look at what you're doing, what your programs are about and how well you, uh, you try to meet the expectations that you, uh, that you have set for yourselves and for the school. Uh, you know, we talked about, just briefly, about the initiative of these rubrics and we wouldn't be doing a very good job. We said, well, here it is and we're moving on and we're assuming that they're, they're in place and everything's fine. So the steering committee, I think, for, you know, certainly from my experience, has been a great opportunity for us to, again, get through this process, but also to, uh, have an opportunity for, for teachers to communicate more effectively. We need a little more of this or we need a little more of that. Can we get some clarity around this issue? Or even to, uh, for one committee on its own to kinda come up with, well, you know, it would be really good if we had a way to streamline this. Uh, and that's something that, you know, doesn't come from the administration at all. Uh, it's, it's, it comes from the community. So I think, uh, that, that piece is also extremely important. Uh, again, as Mr. Rosa mentioned, the timeline is, uh, that, that the organization puts out is, uh, is very prescriptive. Um, so we've met all our September deadlines, we've met all our October deadlines. You can see here that we had seventy out of seventy, um, faculty, uh, surveys completed on the Endicott survey, seven hundred of seven hundred and twenty-nine students completed. We did have, uh, at least one makeup opportunity. In fact, I remember seeing a couple of kids in the halls that, you're on my list, get in here. So we had some ad hoc makeup opportunities as well. And we had two hundred and fourteen, uh, respondents from six hundred and two families and that's a thirty-six percent, uh, submission rate. NEASC is recommending fifteen to twenty. And they said, if you get a, if you get twenty, that's great. And we had thirty-six percent. So, uh, very happy with that. Here's our kind of October to December deadlines. We're in this pieces right now here. We're working on this work.
Evaluation piece, so self-study has been, you know, our primary focus, but certainly, um, we've gotta start thinking already for the March of 2014. So, um, we are responsible for putting up and, and beating, um, the, uh, the visiting team. The visiting team is basically comprised of volunteer educators who, from other districts, uh, you know, from, from around Massachusetts who, who will come in and serve on the visiting committee. So that we're gonna, they're gonna be staying at the Pevy D. Marriott, um, you know, close enough that they can be here, cause they'll be here for long days and, uh, close enough so they can get back at night and, and continue their work. And, um, you know, for those of you that haven't seen an actual visit, they'll, they'll spend, uh, they'll come on Sunday and basically spend a, a good part of the next, you know, two, two and a half days with us. And they'll be interviewing students and shadowing students and interviewing faculty and interviewing administration and school committee members and, um, you know, going over student work and examining student work, examining our evidence that we collect for the different indicators for the standards. Um, certainly looking for, or looking over, uh, they will have had them earlier, but they'll be looking over the reports that each committee generates. So, um, you know, they'll be with us for those, for those days and really be interwoven into all aspects of our typical school day.
Yeah, um, exactly. I was just thinking, you know, so we, we, I think we were kind of initially thinking March because there was no football and there was no, uh, baseball and, you know, kind of a Sunday obligation for a meeting with, uh, the school committee. But I, I, I was on a visit in-
That's good, thank you.
I was on a visit, um, last fall and, uh, you know, that, that Sunday kind of obligation from the, from the community and certainly the school committee, um, you know, is, is, is mostly afternoon. So, um, it's important that we all kind of have that on our calendars. Uh, and then the follow-up, you know, the recommendations that we arrive at, the recommendations that the, uh, organization arrives at and then how we proceed from there, that's that third piece. And before you know it, you're back in the ten-year, start of the ten-year cycle. So, thank you very much. Any, any questions we can help you with?
I think we're in good shape.
If I can just, uh, thank you. I'm sorry.
No, just a good question.
So just, just so you know, so you can't, you know, go, go be able to say that. I don't know, I don't think they ever said that.
We'll still say that, AJ.
The, the, the double-sided sheet that I gave you that has the, uh, statement of core values and beliefs, just in, I, I've highlighted there, uh, that, you know, citizenship, lifelong learning and leadership. Uh, and we, uh, we really see those as our central core values and our beliefs are highlighted there. Um, this is a, again, a very important piece that, uh, we feel that NEASC has kinda hit right, hit right on the nose. It, you need to state what you're about and you need to state about how you believe students learn and what's best for them. So we tried to do that and, um, and make that very clear on that, at least so that you have that, so, uh-
You want us to memorize this for Mom?
Well, you don't wanna hurt.
I think it also-
You haven't memorized it?
Yeah. But thank you very much.
Thanks, AJ. Thanks. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I'm gonna get some kids, like, in a bit, I'm gonna get you some, uh, I'm gonna go back. Thank you very much. Thank you all. I'm up for election, I don't know. I'm not gonna put it on my calendar yet, I'm up for reelection, so.
I'm saying, Sunday. We'll teach you, we'll have food.
We're already nominated.
Oh, that's right. He'll be here, he and Jerry will both guarantee to be here. Taking payments.
So thank you for, uh, allowing those presentations to take, take place tonight. I think, uh, you're just a very small window into, uh, what we see every day, you know? I'm hoping you get the same sense from, uh, those presentations that there's just an awful lot of good, vibrant work going on in the school. It's always nice, I know, for you to see, uh, some of the work that the students are doing and so I appreciate you giving us an opportunity to showcase some of what's happening here at North Reading High School. Um, I do have just a couple of more things that I wanted to speak with you all about. I have my annual, uh, request of your, uh, adoption of some new course proposals for 2013, 2014. I think the superintendent had, uh, hand up four new packets. Uh, I'm, I'm asking, uh, for your adoption of, uh, my proposal for five new classes. Um, and I'll just kinda go through the line and if you have any questions, I'll be certainly happy to answer those for you. Uh, we are looking to add to our, uh, advanced placement course offerings, bringing the number to seventeen now, advanced placement economics and computer science. Um, just a word about the economics, that is a course that, uh, we would be putting into the program of studies if you, if you so allow. Uh, we would put that into the program of studies for 2013, 14 school year, but it actually would not be a course that students could take, uh, until the following year. But we need to put it into the book for next year so that students will see, if, if it's a sophomore student that thinks that they might wanna take, um, advanced placement economics, they need to know that as a junior, they need to take the prerequisite course of world economics. So by putting it in next year, we're alerting them to what the sequence of courses would need to be for them to take that. We did something like this a couple of years ago, um, when we introduced advanced placement psychology. In order for students to take that course, they needed the psychology course offering at the college prep level, so, uh, it's similar in nature to that. Um, we're also, in, 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 I think every year that I've come to you with course proposals, I've been able to tell you that, um, we would be able to organize with no additional staff.
This is the first time that I would say to you that that would not be the case if you were to allow us to introduce a course in Mandarin starting in September. There is no one currently on staff that is licensed to teach Mandarin, so it would be an additional staff person. My hope is that we would introduce this next year as a, as a person that would be a one-fifth teacher, a point two. There would be one section of what we would call Mandarin One to be offered. And if the program is such that it warrants sustaining it in the future, then we would need to add, say in the following year, two levels, which would be Mandarin One and Mandarin Two. We would increase, the Mandarin One students would then be able to take Mandarin Two and then we would hope there would be a new crop of students that would want to take the Mandarin One again. So it has the potential for expanding the staff request, but for next year, we would limit this to one section because of the budgetary restrictions. I've obviously spoken with the superintendent in advance about this and indicated to Mrs. Willis that it would be going outside for an additional staff person equivalent to a zero point two, full-time equivalent. A new course in our science department. It's sort of new, but it would be replacing our existing zoology course, which is very popular, but we are looking to expand that into the bioethics realm. So this is a course that would be basically a semester, a two semester course, the first semester focusing in on kind of the zoology aspect of it and then introducing in the second semester a bioethics piece. So this course would be called Bioethics and Fauna. And then lastly, a course in Introduction to Engineering Design. You may recall that we introduced a few years ago a course in Principles of Engineering. We're finding that that's a junior, senior elective where it has been our determination that for students to be properly prepared to take the Principles of Engineering elective as a junior or senior, they would benefit from an Introduction to Engineering Design course that would be geared mostly for freshmen and sophomore students. Doesn't mean that the upperclassmen couldn't take this, but it would be something that we would gear toward the freshman and sophomore students. And then the only other thing I added on this sheet at the bottom is that you might recall last year, we, with your blessing, made a change to the senior English course requirement. We offered up a course, a selection of courses in the English department that would satisfy the senior English requirement, courses like Journalism, Contemporary Dramatic Literature, which has gone very well this year, by the way. That worked, that was a very good move. We now have senior students taking courses in those two subjects, but also the two advanced placement courses that we offer, and still the British literature. We're looking to add a Literacy and Legacy of Shakespeare course at the honors level that would be an additional elective that students could choose. And then lastly, we've introduced over the last few years, the course in Genetics. It's been our determination that that course, the content of it is really more advanced than maybe we first thought and is probably geared, is probably best weighted in an honors level course as opposed to an academic level course. So we're looking to still offer the genetics course, changing the name a little bit from Advanced Genetics to just Genetics and then elevating it in its weight, which factors into the student's grade point average to an honors level course as opposed to an academic level course. So.
Did you intentionally skip over the computer science or did you just-
No, I just mentioned it as one of the two-
Okay.
-that were being added to the advanced placement offerings from 15 to 17.
Okay.
But I didn't speak a lot about it, but we, you know, we introduced the computer programming course a couple of years ago. It's been very popular. You know, I think it's probably fair to say that this just seems to be the right thing to do, that it's an area that we have students that are very talented in and to elevate their course of study. There is an AP course offering and we think it's a wise thing for us as a school to adopt. I think the superintendent may have informed you earlier in the year when a presentation was made about advanced placement courses and performance results on last year's test and our, our participation rate has grown substantially. It's all, I think it's nearing about five times, this year will near about five times what it was in the spring of 2004. We think that's a good thing. We think that students have benefited from the rigor of advanced placement courses. In all honesty, it's, it's one of the things I'm the most proud of really in terms of our course offerings is that we've expanded the rigor of what we offer to students and the breadth of offerings too. We've, I think, offered a lot, tapping into students' interests and better preparing them for what they go on to do beyond high school, which I'm going to speak to you a little bit about as well once this item is satisfied tonight, so.
Any questions or comments on the courses recommended or other topics related to the new courses?
I personally, this is very strong, very strong vision. The right way we're heading for the 21st century. We've also done excellent job.
I only have one comment and that is, the Bioethics and Fauna course seems so odd to me, but I was a biology major and you're just putting two very, to me, very disparate things together. I'm just wondering what the rationale was for that and the full courses, is it kind of put them together?
Yeah, I think part of it is driven by the schedule.
Okay.
And the interesting question, I thought you were going to go more in the area of the title. We started a little, we went around a little bit on the title of the course. I'm glad you liked the title.
I'm commenting on the appropriate.
Okay, all right. So I think it was found that there is, the schedule of the day, according to the student's ability to take eight classes in their scheduling, did not, it would be complicated for an upperclassman in the junior and senior year to still satisfy their requirement and be exposed to a high level, a more rigorous course at the honors level than just the zoology that had been offered. The teacher that has taught the zoology is the teacher that would be teaching this course if it runs, which I expected it would, you know, as long as you all endorse it.
Oh, I had no problem. I just wanted you to know what the rationale is.
I think, I think there's an interest in offering a straight bioethics course, you know, in other words, how do bioethics affect humans? But the teacher's expertise lies more in the animal world, if that makes sense. So she's trying to combine the two, bringing in a bioethics study into an area where she feels stronger and that's in the zoology area. You know, in time, I wouldn't be surprised if I start to think more about semester-long courses for students. I think that's probably something that's going to come about in the next couple of years, you know, for them to be able to tap into getting, you know, maybe a greater variety, but still getting, you know, a bit of an intensive. So you might, might a student take a course that's a semester long in Bioethics, one semester, but a second semester course could be something very different. It could be like marine biology. We're talking about courses in horticulture, meteorology. You know, we had those conversations this fall as a staff. So I think those things might be coming, but in terms of being able for students to satisfy, particularly in science, which is our broadest department, it's the, it's the department that has the most staff, it's where students are doubling, tripling and sometimes quadrupling up. So in order for students to satisfy the core courses, but still take some areas of interest and elective, we had to kind of combine in a four-year course.
It's very creative. They would be separated college, but I think it's awesome that you're putting them together.
We'll see how it goes.
I think, John, if you ever given thought, could you do this? I've seen other schools where for a senior year, the student can choose two sciences. So for, like you just talked about, for the first semester, they take X, for the second semester, they take Y. And, and the reason I ask that is I think it gives them a chance to explore maybe different areas in which they might be interested moving forward, but they're not really sure. So maybe it's bioethics and whatever, horticulture. So have you given thought to doing that?
We have. I think it would have to be done in the semester course offerings. We've thought about it in other departments too, by the way. English is another area. We could almost get like a mini course over the course of the semester. It's a little bit, it's certainly not impossible. It is something we've thought about. It's a little bit complicated by the fact of our daily schedule, which is an every-other-day schedule. So students really would be meeting, you know, over the course of the year, they meet 90 times, basically, 180 days of school, they're in the class 90 times. Now you'd be getting down into like the body, body, right? I don't think it can't work. In fact, I think just the opposite, but I think it has to be something that's done, you know, like most things, pretty strategically. The sciences, you know, I would be willing to bet that the bulk of our students significantly take more than the one required science course each year. We have a number of junior, senior students, a significant number that are taking two, sometimes three, science courses. That is an area that's very, very popular in this school. I think that's a good thing, of course, and it doesn't mean that they're sacrificing something else. It's just, I think we've been able to offer a wide range of courses, particularly in science, because of the licenses that people, people hold, to be able to offer a broad range that students have tapped into and I think it's a good thing. But the idea of semester courses has kind of been on our, kind of on our backboard, so to speak, but I think it's probably something that's going to, maybe when we get through the building project and the accreditation, it might be something that we really, you know, have the ability to put a really serious thought into, because I do think there's a benefit. I went to school in a school that had many courses. They were, they were semester courses and I think it was good because you, you had the ability to tap into two areas of interest over the course of one sub, or one course, which was a good thing.
I made a question. Cliff moved to approve in support of these courses.
Can we amend that to reflect that we need to consider budgetary implications?
Right, I should say with the caveat that we, for Mandarin, we can find-
I want to support that.
...the money in the budget for.
I put it in there for a reason.
Okay.
I won't accept, I won't second that if some students can, if they want.
Does, does nobody on staff try to go pick up Mandarin over summer?
I'm sorry, there isn't.
I think we can find the money, but I feel more comfortable during the motion.
I can tell you that as Joan and I had these conversations, I took a look at the salary schedule for next year and the master's 12 salary schedule at a point two will come to about $15,000.
Oh, well, never mind.
Okay, all right.
Second?
We have a motion by Cliff, second, and by Karen to accept and support the courses recommended by Mr. Bernard. Any feeling of this going? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Yes. Great job, John.
Thank you very much. It's, thank you. It's a lot of good work. I'm a part of a lot of people believing. I appreciate it. Thank you. They'll be excited and they know, they know the students will too. I would be shocked, as is the case in the past, that these courses will not be very, very popular again. So I did have two other things that I wanted to just kind of clue you into, so to speak. And the first thing, I've kind of made it a bit of a goal myself, for myself, this year to, and it's really been brought about through the, through the Navias program, that we have a greater ability to stay in touch with students once they leave us. So I've kind of set a goal for us this year to do a little bit more with our alumni. So I want to, I want to share with you something that, you're seeing this really, this unveiling today is, you know, something that not a lot of folks have seen. But with Navias, as I said, we now have our graduates' contact information by way of their email accounts, no longer just an account, to be able to, to tap into what I think is some valuable information that's going to help us to just kind of look at ourselves as a school and kind of go through the continuous improvement, if you will. So using SurveyMonkey, what I created here is a survey that I intend to send out probably sometime in February to last year's graduating class, the class of 2012. The reason I'm holding this is what, part of the survey, of course, this would be anonymous, but part of the survey asks students about where they are in school now and how they're doing. And in order for us to get answers to some of those questions, I think there are 18 in all, they need to receive their first semester grades. So I'm kind of letting that, you know, kind of December, January window pass and my intention is in February to, to, to share this survey with them. So I'm not sure how, how much detail you want to go into, if you want to see actually all of the questions, is that, okay? Just give you a sense.
This is something that I've been, I've been asking for, for many years and I know we're not going to get all the students to participate, but I strongly support this. Any way we can, you know, keep track of how our kids are doing once they leave North Reading, I think is, is helpful.
We do too, you know, and this is now, we now have a better vehicle, I think, to get that information. We've always, I've always conducted a survey of the graduating class upon their graduation, but it's never been as alumni, so to speak now, having gone through a semester of college. And by the way, this is something that I could see doing, you know, in future years too, with the same class of students beyond just their first semester. But as a starting off point, we're just looking to gather some information and essentially, you know, the questions really are, I think, kind of zeroing in on, you know, the level of preparedness that they have, you know, how well are they doing at the school, the things that they believe, you know, benefited from, that they benefited from as a student at the high school and where are the areas that maybe they feel that they could have been, could have had a better experience and, you know, then we're going to use that data too. So I'm kind of excited about this. It seems to be, you know, a comprehensive set of questions. I obviously worked with Mr. LaPret, the guidance counselors, to craft the questions to make sure that we were, you know, kind of asking the things that we thought were important for us to help shape the school in a better way. So you can, that's something that students are going to, graduates are going to find out about, probably in about seven or eight weeks from now.
Unless they read the paper, then they'll probably find out.
They might. That's okay, that's okay. A lot of them are home on break right now, so that's good. It's got an early introduction.
That's right, that'll be good.
So that's that. The other thing is, in kind of a similar way, for the first time, I reached out to a number of graduates from last year and the year prior and on March 18th of this year, I kind of used that, that timeframe for when students might be home on, on spring break. But I've invited, I think right now I have seven students, again, that either graduated in the class of 2011 or the class of 2012, to come back for an evening program where we're going to facilitate with them questions for our junior and senior families. So it's an evening program at 6:30, it's a Monday night, March 18th. And we're going to just, we're going to give them questions ahead of time for them to think about. Our guidance counselors, Mr. LaPret and I will be there. We're going, I used the expression, we were going to kind of Phil Donahue style, nobody knew who Phil Donahue was anymore, so I had to upgrade that to like a Wilford Winfrey. That's the true story. Who's Phil Donahue? And it's kind of, it's going to be a very, you know, kind of interactive, not all that formal, but I mean, I think we'll have a panel of the students, of the graduates up on stage to really just, you know, ask them about their experiences, to try to give, and this is what I envision is inviting junior and senior, our current junior and senior students and their parents to come and just kind of hear about, you know, what were the things you were most surprised by when you got to college? You know, what kind of helpful hints can you, can you offer to these now, you know, high school students that are going to be where you are in a very short time? I have to tell you, the response of the graduates to do this was, was great. I mean, they were just so excited about it, so enthusiastic, they, you know, "Oh, I wish you had done this for us," so you know, that kind of a thing. So they were just, I mean, it was immediate. Unfortunately, some students, you know, weren't, they don't all have the same week for semester break, but, excuse me, for spring break, but what I did was tap into when I thought the most of them would be around and so we coordinated it according to their schedules. So that's how we came up with March 15. So I think it could be, could be a lot of fun and I think it's going to be very informative for folks and probably is going to be something that we do anywhere we come out.
So, so when, they didn't know who Phil Donahue was, when you said, you know, "He's married to that girl, Marlo Thompson," they didn't get it? Or Danny Thompson?
Oh, that is really, they didn't get it?
They actually may be available for them.
I was really, I guess I really dated myself, so.
Yeah, Phil might be available, though.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think he's doing much.
We have a school committee meeting that night.
And how about the kids, no party school, right?
The what, Mike?
No party school.
Oh, no party. Yeah, yeah, right, right, yeah.
University of Florida.
I think, we're going to script the questions. No, but it's going to, I am going to give them questions ahead of time to think about, but in the end, it's really going to be, you know, what do the, what does the audience have for questions too? But I think we need some starting off points, but I, I really am very, very optimistic that it's going to be a fun and informative night. I mean, I, the response of the graduates really was, you would know, you know all of them. They're just, they were really, absolutely, "It's a great idea, we'll be there" type of thing. It was, it was pretty good.
Great.
Mr. Bernard, are you starting at 6:30 that night?
We are starting at 6:30.
Well, the only thing I'm, you guys did a great job tonight, great presentations, but because you went so far over time, you don't get to present next year. So, I mean, I love-
We haven't, times?
Yes. Oh, 30 minutes.
Okay. Jerry, do you agree with me on that? No pre-attended for the high school.
I'm sorry.
I mean, and I think-
I'd like to extend that to a lot of other persons.
No, great job, sorry. No, it's fine. It was an excellent job. The kids were great and, you know, showing that photography course and the red cross cup and, you know, great stuff, really good stuff. I'm open.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I would have stayed there for two hours.
Yeah, that kind of guy, very good.
Can I ask that we take our work?
Yes, I was going to bring up next our Wayne Hardiker, our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds.
The only one that's upset at Johnny, Wayne.
Right. Wayne's going to give us his annual award. Oh, he's got a handout, look at this. Wayne, I love when Wayne has handouts. Ooh, it's a decibel meter. This is bad.
It's counting down.
I'm below it. I have to speak up, Karen.
Yeah, Karen, I'll be right back.
No, no, you can't. Look at you.
Wayne?
Your honor. Thank you. Thanks for inviting me. Do you all have a copy of my report?
Yep.
My big four every day, every week, every month, every year. Clean, safe, warm, and dry. Those are my big four. Clean, safe, warm, and dry. They're all a challenge every day. Safe is the latest challenge. Warm, not so much. Clean, we're clean. Dry, we got a few drips here and there, but the safety factor now is a huge, is a huge topic.
I don't like when you look at Jerry and me when you say we got a few drips here and there. But anyway, that's...
As far as the decibels, Perry's not a Jerry. As far as our manpower, we have twenty employees. We downed one through budgetary reductions. We didn't lose... Well, we lost a person through attrition. One of our senior men retired. Had to replace, but we did, through quite a process, replace him with a half... We already had an employee, so moved him into maintenance, and he still does his grounds work, and he's working on it very well. He's a busy young man, but he's learning very well. He splits his time per my request between grounds and all the things that Ron Dyer used to do on the buildings, the maintenance program. And, you know, we do get it all done. There's a lot to do, but we do get it all done. Twenty full-time employees, seventeen school-based custodians, one and a half grounds workers, two van drivers with seventy licenses, one and a half maintenance workers. I say Ron Dyer retired after forty years, and Mike Perro now has filled that void as an existing employee. And we have a summer program which works very well. The buildings and grounds issues, the national local insurance rewards program, we continue to receive our eight percent reduction on insurance premiums, indoor equality monitoring, roof inspections, freeze-up prevention, and facility self-inspections. Most of these I do... I do most of these myself, but it is a pretty effective program. And we do save quite a bit of town funds by doing it, so... Some of the things we have received over the course of several years of getting grants, asbestos safety awareness training, roof inspection program, all of these are grants, no cost to the school department. Infrared heat loss camera, a septic system, very exciting, preventive maintenance program, but, you know... And I have my decibel handout.
Do you use that decibel?
I'm thinking if the construction project continued...
Great idea.
I could probably use that in the existing middle school and...
That's actually a really good idea.
Check those decibels.
There's an app for that.
It'd be very noisy. I'll list each school quickly. Have any... Please, have any questions? I'm hesitant to ask me. That's what I'm here for. The little school, the entire heating system was renovated. It is running like a top. I tell you, it is so efficient. It's much more evenly heated now. The principal is quite pleased. We had, like, sea wing was always chilly. Challenges that we had three high-efficiency, ninety-six percent efficient condensing boilers over there. It really is a state-of-the-art. And I go on at five o'clock in the morning, check on it at home. I can turn it on, I can shut it off depending on the outside air temperature. It really is a very, very efficient system. And believe me, the staff is quite pleased with the comfort level. The hood school, we continue to receive, save approximately nine thousand kilowatts per month. We have variable frequency drive pumps up there. They do speed up and slow down. Before, they used to run wide open at thirty horsepower reach. Now they speed up and slow down depending on demand. We do save a lot of kilowatts. And the school is evenly heated. I guess one of our chronic achievements is the bachelor's school. It's in year seven for renovations. I hear we got to check the energy management system anytime. Usually you check it maybe nine o'clock in the morning. And if it's all like pale green or green, every classroom, it's... I tell you, just about every day, it runs like a top. It's in year seven. Very little of my maintenance budget goes to that school. Very, very little. It's well-designed. It was commissioned. Equipment is by Automated Logic, which I'm pursuing with the new middle school, high school, which is a challenge because of the budgetary requirements, but I think it's in our best interest to pursue it with Automated Logic, based on what we have accomplished at the bachelor's school. And it really, it runs well. If you walk through that school, I mean, it's in year seven, but it really, it looks great. It's shiny, clean, the light... The only drawback is there's probably fifty different types of lights in that school. Fifty different types of lights, from little eyeballs to gigantic four-to-a-half metal halides. You know, it's overdesigned there, but really it is a wonderful facility. I'm sorry?
Blaine and Jerry.
They're Jerry.
You were on that committee.
Right.
He said there's different kind of lights. They're all good lights.
I'm sure.
There's a lot. We are also looking at additional parking spaces at that school. That's been a challenge since it opened. Mr. Nelson's helping with that. We're trying to gain some new parking spots, but it's quite a challenge, because it is an historic district. Here's Mr. Clean, Safe, Warm, and Dry right here. He knows that. Middle school, high school, I think we're all well aware of what's going on with those two facilities. I am spending quite a substantial amount of school funds on the boiler systems at both of those schools. I think I spent between ten and twelve thousand dollars on the boilers at the middle school, the pumps. And that's an indication to me that, you know, they're old and tired.
They're old and tired.
It's consuming more of my budget on an annual basis. The project, from what I see, is it's moving along. I know that there's a lot of... The real plus was when school closed, the kids left. When the school closed back in June, the kids left, and when they came back, the modules, they went from over here on the east end of the building, they came into the west end of the building. Like, nothing... All they could do is check the module, put it on one side to the other. It was quite a... It was an amazing process, moving water lines, gas lines, electric lines, telephone lines, cable lines, huge excavations, huge site issues, taking all those modular boxes, like this one right here, taking it all apart. Imagine taking this all apart, moving it, and putting it back together again, and just moving like normal. First day of school, right back on.
And they weren't too sturdy when they took them apart either.
They were not. They had to be braced.
They didn't look good.
They didn't look good. But they, really, they come out good.
Right.
That's pretty much my report. Like I say, my big four are clean, safe, warm, and dry. The safety part, that's an ongoing challenge for us. We do have, I think we have sixty-eight cameras in our schools. We have all of the... There's one right there. All the doors are locked. We do have... We issue entrance fobs, security fobs to the staff. So if you walk up to the door, issue a fob, it'll turn to green, the door will not lock. You have a certain amount of time to get in. Mostly all... Well, like all the other doors, they're numbered. They're numbered in and out. Like that door right there, door six is numbered inside and outside. They're locked. It is an ongoing challenge though. It is an ongoing challenge, so...
Wayne, I think the buildings continue to be in great shape. I'll ask you a question. I think security is going to be an ongoing issue that we're going to have to continue to look at, and whether we're going to have to increase security in our buildings. And if we did that, how would we do that? But I think it's always going to be an ongoing issue. We've made a lot of improvements over the last four or five years, though. We've significantly improved the security of our buildings. One question I have, do you see any... I guess the biggest issues would be at the middle school and the high school, and we're not going to spend a lot of money fixing those. You're just going to try to do whatever you need to do to get by for the next two, three years and...
Which is what we're doing.
Okay.
We're doing. Trying not to... Like today, I was up at the science wing up here, and there was a request by this science head up here, Michelle Giordano, to look at the faucets in the science labs. So I'm going to meet with her. They're probably original equipment, all those little faucets, you know, the goosnecks and all that. Some of those are... They don't work, or they're broken. Do we replace the whole faucet? Maybe we... Maybe we don't. Maybe we do. How much did I twist my arm?
It's about fifty-five years old, if the original equipment, right?
So we'll have to look at that.
Vintage. That's the new.
Vintage look. They're old. We certainly... Everything will be maintained a hundred percent. Do we do extra stuff? Maybe, maybe not.
As you said, safe, warm, clean and dry.
Clean and dry. As long as we're safe, warm, clean, and dry.
Excuse me, Wayne.
Well done, John. Well, good result.
Any other questions or comments for Wayne?
Just keep it running for another couple, three years.
Yeah, that's odd.
I'm sure we can. I'm sure we can. You know, a lot of stuff we can do behind the scenes, in order to seize, when you come in, the kids walk in in the morning, the schools are warm, the lights are on. How did it happen like that? Whatever. It happens. We get it done, so...
Carl?
I want to join the school committee in thanking Wayne for the service he provides. I know of no one who's more proactive and who is more of a get-it-done guy than Wayne Hardaker. And I sure appreciate that. You know, there are times when I have to ask him to do the most onerous thing in the world. He doesn't hesitate. Before I even finish the sentence, he's out the door to stop doing it. So I really appreciate Wayne's service to North Reading Public.
What else you know? Appreciate his participation on the secondary school building committee, which has been extremely valuable. And remind the community again that because of Wayne and his staff and what they do for our schools, we're getting an extra two percent in reimbursement from the state because of the condition that our schools are in.
You know, like Wayne says, a lot of things are done behind the scenes that people don't know about, but if you want to get a good idea, put Wayne and the staff through. Just walk into any one of our schools and take a look around it. You can't... I don't think you can find schools that are better maintained or look better than our schools, though.
We have a very dedicated staff. They're really dedicated. They come in, they work hard, and they know what it takes. It's a nice operation. It is a nice operation. I appreciate it. It's a great school department. What else? Questions? Comments?
Great job. I can't wait. When the high school and middle school are done, you won't have any reports to make. Everything would be perfect.
I'll find something. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. Okay. Correct. I know we have a couple of trips to approve, so why don't we just get right to those? Because they're both high school. It's trips for both the boys' hockey team and the two girls who are playing, I believe two girls, on the PBD Linfield co-op team, correct?
Correct.
Kathy or John?
That's why they're back. They're going to speak to that.
Yes. In all honesty, I don't know that the girls are going on the trip, but it is more to provide them the opportunity to choose to go. I'm just sorry they don't know where they're going, but it is, you know, they're so endorsed, it would allow their participation. For the boys' hockey team, that is, I think you all know, the annual request. My experience, it's been a good one with the team and the coaches, and has been event-free. And I would endorse, would endorse both requests and ask for you to approve it.
Actually, this one, they used to go over to Martha's Vineyard, which always gave me a little bit, you know, they're going over in a boat, but this is now on Sandwich, so they're staying on the mainland.
Right.
Makes it better.
Well, Martha's Vineyard was a lot of fun. It was very cold going over there.
So any questions on this proposal for the boys' hockey team to play in a tournament in Sandwich, Massachusetts on Monday, February 18th, and Tuesday, February 19th? If not...
Is that up?
No, that's for the questions.
Oh, no.
Can I have a motion?
I will make a motion, so...
Second?
Motion by Karen, second by Jerry, to approve the varsity boys' hockey team trip to Sandwich in February. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Yes. And now the girls' trip?
Yes.
This is... We have, I believe we have two girls playing on the... This is what... The school may approve this a year and a half.
Yeah. Last year was the first year for the co-op team. It's PBD Linfield and North Reading. And I think as we do with all of our new athletic programs, it's still a pilot program for the first two years. Which essentially means that the kids that are going to play on those teams have to find ways to fund their own expense, playing on the team at least for the first two years. And then I think what we've done in the past is we've looked at the participation and whether or not it's worth going forward and endorsing it. We've done that with lacrosse for both boys and girls. We did it with field hockey for boys and girls. We did it with the co-op wrestling team, I believe, John. Same thing, and we've had great participation. This year, there's just two girls, and that's the reason why we don't have a team here at the high school, so...
So this is to approve the trip if the two girls who are on the team decide that they want to participate and attend the tournament. And this tournament is in January, and actually, this is...
Martha's Vineyard.
This is down Martha's Vineyard. Yeah, that's right. Motion to approve the girls' hockey trip. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Nanas. Well, actually, four, I should say four with zero on extension. Thanks, gentlemen. Anything else? Anything else?
That's good.
That's it? Are you sure?
I am.
All right. So quick. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it, everybody. Great job.
I apologize to the next speaker because I haven't eaten any dinner or lunch.
We don't have any speakers next.
We have Mr. Nelson, I'm assuming he's going to say something.
We have Ms. Willis.
She's a person.
I don't know about side speakers. Let's get back to our agenda here. Next is the update on the school building project. Kathy?
Yes. Since the last school committee meeting, there have been two secondary school building meetings that took place, one on December 4th and one on December 11th. And during those meetings, the Secondary School Building Committee continued to work with the architects, the CNF RIS, and the OPM to reconcile project cost estimates leading to value engineering strategies. The SSBC at that time was working to close a budget gap of 4.5 million. Both meetings did open with executive sessions for the purpose of discussion, discussing potential litigation. There will be another Secondary School Building Committee meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, December 18th, that will convene as an executive session, not to return to public session. So, based on the value engineering where it conducted at the last two meetings, the project budget for 60% completion of construction documents has been reconciled. In order to do so, there were other reductions that were voted on by the Secondary School Building Committee. And I happy report that all 625 parking spaces have been maintained in the project scope. Some of the items that have been eliminated or deferred at this point in time are the district office, basketball hoops that were electric will now be manual. There's been some reduction to additional plantings, and I believe.
There are no floor tiles?
Oh, that is an old hose.
Oh, that's an old hose.
And then, oh, I know, the lower fields will be low and c.
Yeah, there won't be fields though, they'll just be.
There'll be fields with low and c.
With low and c.
Low and c. They're just, they're not going to do the drainage work.
Right.
So, Mr. Venetzi or Mr. Bowers attend all of the Secondary School Building Committee meetings as well as the chair, so I'm not sure if you wanted to make any additional comments at this time?
Just one quick one. As we've gone through this process of value engineering and trying to get the budget down to, I'm sorry, the project down to budget, I just want people to know that we're moving forward with the project. We haven't been sitting and waiting to get this done. Project's moving forward, bids are coming in on steel, concrete, waterproofing, site work, et cetera. I think, and Cliff's better with dates than I am, but I think we're going to start with the site work, so the budget is progressing, it's moving forward, and you'll see work being done over the next, you know, 30 to 60 days out there. Even as we bring this budget down, the, the cost of the project down to budget.
The last Thursday was the first construction project meeting, project meeting 001. And physical work on the site will begin on the 26th of December. There'll be trees cut, so you can expect that fairly rapidly, there will be a change in the way the territory looks. But we're moving ahead now on site work, on steel, on concrete. There'll be major changes that will be observable. And there's also been some, some slippage on time for cementals of the 90% and 100% contract documents. But that should not affect the long-term schedule because the packages that are out under construction now are highly critical elements. Schedule is getting to be fairly tight, however. There's a number of items that have been deferred, as have been noted by everybody else here, that, that will need to be somehow restored within the project. And we're looking to, to get the 90% complete contract documents so that we can get a more definitive appraisal of what the cost is going to be. At that point, then, we'll, we'll have to make further decisions.
And just so everybody understands, about approximately 20, a little bit more than 20% of the project has already been out to bid, and those bids have been accepted in terms of the cost of the construction cost and the site work cost of the project. We would be irresponsible at this point if we didn't move ahead with this project. We've spent over $6 million already on soft costs with the professionals who we're working with. The SSBC has spent an inordinate amount of time combing through every detail of this project, and as Mr. Bowers says, we've had to defer things that honestly need to be in this project, and we need to figure out how to get those back in the project. But at the same time, we need to move ahead and, and, and work on this as we go along. One, because of the schedule, but two, because we've already spent the money and awarded bids. For us to stop now, the only it's going to do is cost us a lot more money in the long run, and we have met with the SSBC, the finance planning team, which is the chairs and vice chairs of the committees in town, and the superintendent, and the town administrator, and the school business, the DOFO Director of Finance and Operations, and the town finance director. And on Friday, it was, they're unanimous that we need to move forward with the project. And, and we cannot at this point stop. It's difficult. It's difficult because, you know, the fact that the alone, that the central administrative offices have been deferred, they're going to be part of the plan, but right now, they're not part of the construction because we don't have the money and the budget to.
They're not a part of the estimate.
Correct. They're not a part of the estimate.
They, they're still a part of the project.
Right.
And we're continuing along with the design as if they were a part of the project, but the estimate has them, has them and many other items deferred.
Right.
So, that we're able to continue along.
I think it's, I think it's important for everybody in the community to pay attention to every meeting that's taking place, and if you have a chance, attend the public meetings. There's going to be a lot more information coming out of this project in the next few months, and we're going to continue to, to move it forward with our goal of getting it open on time. That's going to be, yes, a challenge, as, as Mr. Bowers said, the schedule's getting really tight, there's not much budget factor in the schedule right now.
I, I think the words were zero flow.
Right. Zero flow.
People in the scheduling business says that there is no room for any further hesitation.
Any questions or comments from anybody else in the committee, or you just want to add anything on the project?
I'm just going to end with, on Wednesday, December 19th, there's going to be a meeting with the MSBA Facilities Assessment Subcommittee, and representatives from North Reading, your PMA, and the Chair of the SSBC, as well as representatives of the MSBA Board, will meet to discuss the project budget at 60% CD as compared to the approved budget for the project in total. And they'll also talk a lot about plans to communicate changes to the community, if any. So, that meeting is taking place this Wednesday.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next, I believe Superintendent Willis, you said that you were going to pass over the budget vision presentation and present it at the next meeting?
We can put a hold on that and present it at the January 14th.
Pass over.
Okay, next, bills and payroll, I leave a sign. Minutes, I actually read for both, they have a couple of changes. One is, hold on. In the, on the November 19th minutes, in the discussion about the baseball softball field update, the last paragraph says that the decision stands, which we did state at this time, the decision stands, but I also added that we need to keep the project on the radar and that we're going to invite the participants of this group in to meet with the school committee, in which we then went forward and did invite them, and I believe they're going to be coming the second meeting in January. Is that correct, Kathy?
It's the first meeting.
First meeting, January 14th.
14th.
Okay. So, I just want that to be noted in the minutes.
I'm sorry, could you tell me where that is again?
It's the.
Section 3. I see.
The November 19th minutes, under C2 Baseball Softball Field Update. The last paragraph said is correct, but I also said that we were going to have to keep this item on the agenda, on, on our radar, and that we would invite the participants to come and meet with the school committee.
Right.
So, that's all. So, with that, with that, unless anyone has anything else, with that.
With that modification, move to approve.
Further discussion? Any none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. And then, on the next one, just in the attendees, we have Claudia Brown is the advisor to the Adventure Club, and we have Anna Martin, the advisor to the North Reading Adventure Club, listed after her. I think Anna Martin is one of the officers in the club, and Claudia Brown is the advisor. Got that? And that's all I have there.
Non-obstinate.
With that modification.
Motion by Cliff, you have a second?
Can't be me.
No. Second by Michael. Any further discussion? Any none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. One abstention. Okay. Budget update.
Yes, thank you. Briefly, in front of you, you have the November 2012 budget report. There are no changes to indicate from the last report during the month of October. We continue to watch the special education costs very closely because, as we've noted already, those costs are considerably over budget. Working very closely with Patty Bullard and the staff to guide and track this so we know exactly where we stand. And so, as noted before, we're in excess of $200,000 over budget in that area. The other area we're looking at is substitute teachers. Now, we have 11 teachers, or we will, in January, have 11 teachers on leave of absence, which is a fairly high number. But it is what it is. So, those are, there are financial implications to that, but we're able to track them, so I suspect at this point, even our substitute budget will be over budget at year-end, given this very high number of leaves, almost all of them are voluntary leaves. I'd like to also, if I could, speak briefly about the 9C cuts that the governor announced on December 4th. There are 9C cuts, of course, are cuts that a governor can make without legislative approval. There are certain cuts he can make to the so-called executive branch that he can do so without going through legislative action. There are three cuts that will affect the town of North Reading. The first one is a 1% cut to local aid. All cities and towns are going to be cut 1% of their local aid costs, local aid appropriation. For North Reading, that will amount to $15,000 in discussions with the town administrator. Those are cuts, of course, on the municipal side. The town is working on those, and Mr. Balconis has already said that he does not foresee any significant implications for those cuts. The second reduction is a 46% reduction in the reimbursements that local school districts get for the transportation of homeless students. That is not a big ticket item for the town of North Reading. While we do have presently 11 homeless students attending North Reading Public Schools, that we don't reach the benchmark for reimbursement in the first place, so we're already absorbing the costs of that transportation for homeless students. So, the reduction, you know, a 46% reduction of zero, of course, is zero. So, that does have significant implications for other communities that house more students in that unfortunate category. The third and most important reduction is in the circuit breaker. As the committee knows, the circuit breaker is a state program which reimburses us for our highest-cost special education students. And the, the reduction, as it was first announced, I quantified out to be about $50,000 for North Reading Public Schools, which was a great concern. But several days after those cuts were announced, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education came out with further guidance and basically stated that they feel they can make up those reductions with other funds under the DESE programs. So, while that's not promised, there's a fair amount of optimism that we won't really realize the cuts that have been announced by the governor. So, if that comes out to pass, the impact of 9C cuts in North Reading Public Schools will be zero. So, we'll cross our fingers and hope that happens.
Any questions, comments, or comments?
I just want to make the comment, the state continues to fake out that special education is a real cost for communities, and it still upsets me that we have to treat those students differently in this way. It is a crime. That's all.
Any others? Okay, next, no staffing announced, no kids' donations to talk about. Subcommittee reports. Jerry, Athletics Sub.
Just quickly, Mr. Chairman, I just got a handout that our Athletic Director, Dave Johnson, gave us, and it's, there's two things there, I'm not going to go over, but one of them is the status of the revolving account, the second is the participation for winter sports. Participation is up fairly significantly, and therefore, the amount of money collected for user fees was up as well. So, the participation, it looks like, for both fall and winter sports was, was up. We also talked at the Subcommittee meeting about the softball field renewal. In fact, the day that we talked about it, I think the bids were going to be open, so I'd ask Carl how that, how that came out.
The bids, we're still vetting the bids. The, it was one very, very low bid, in the $40,000 range. Remember, this is, we received to be a $100,000 project, and on further investigation, that company misunderstood the specifications, so we're letting them withdraw their bid. The, there are, the other bids range from the high 80s to the, $88,000 to $140,000. So, we're very closely looking at the two lowest bidders in the $88,000 to $92,000 range. So, we're feeling that that was good news in that we had budgeted $100,000 for this project. And there will be costs over and above the bid cost because we would like to continue the services of our civil engineer to help manage the program on a day-to-day basis. This has turned out to be a very complicated process. There are so many daily issues we're dealing with on this that I won't go through detail at this stage, but we do need some external help at this point to, in my judgment, to manage the project and to ensure that the contractor, by its body, the RFP, and the, you may remember, I showed you, the RFP was 800 pages, to make certain that the right field is used, the right engineering specifications are followed. So, it's a long way of saying that even if we come in under $100,000, we would like to devote some dollars to management, a very professional firm, to get the job done right. So, we have, we don't have a company that we can award it to at this point, but we have two companies that are, that are likely to be the people we will work with, and as soon as we do that, we'll announce that, and then we'll meet with that company, develop a calendar, and, and hope to put a shovel on the ground.
And the Subcommittee, obviously, their concern was that the, the field be playable when the spring softball season starts, but that's, obviously, we'll have to wait to see on that. We had a brief discussion about the Citizens for Equality, which our superintendent is scheduled to be here and make a presentation to us on the January 14th meeting. Girls' Co-op Hockey Team, we had a brief discussion, again, we talked about that tonight, we've already gone through it. It's a team that is in a pilot program, second year. We've done this with, as I said, numerous other athletic programs whereby the kids that are participating in those teams have to, we pay their own way or raise money to pay their way, and then after the second year, we reevaluate and make a determination as to whether or not we're going to incorporate it into our regular antischolastic program. We talked again about the assistant varsity coaching positions, and again, I think Mr. Johnson highlighted softball, baseball, lacrosse, and soccer. The two sports that would fall within the current fiscal year are softball and baseball. If, in fact, we wanted to try to appoint a, an assistant coach for both the varsity softball and baseball team, the cost would be approximately $4,000 for each one of them. And then, of course, lacrosse and, I'm sorry, soccer would be next fall, lacrosse would be in the spring, but I think that was the secondary concern of the Athletic Director after softball and baseball.
I'd like to get those on the agenda in January, to vote on those.
January 14th.
Yeah. And have Superintendent Johnson.
Make a decision. Yeah, he, he wanted to know, but I think we talked about doing something in January, up or down.
Yeah. Okay. Any else?
And that's pretty much it. Anything else, Kathy?
No. Perfect. And just quickly, the finance planning team, the majority of the meeting was spent on the school project. We also got our initial look at revenue estimates for next year, and I'm not even going to pay that much attention to them because they're so early and they're so conservative that we'll build our budget and hopefully, what did they say, build the budget and the revenues will come, or something like that? That's what we're going to do. I think that's going to happen. So, you know, right now, they're being conservative, as they always are, on their first revenue projections for the following fiscal year. And I think that was basically, we had a finance planning team. We did, actually, we did set up, there'll be some additional meetings related, finance planning team moved, additional meetings related to the school project. The finance planning team will be having additional meetings, so.
Capital Planning Committee is going to start meeting as well.
Right. But there was no schedule. I don't think there's a schedule yet, is there?
Attenuatively, it starts Thursday.
Okay. And that's it. We have Subcommittee meetings coming up. Administrative report, Kathy?
Sure. I just thought I would give you an update on some of the events that have taken place since last Friday, December 14th, and I'm speaking in reference to the Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown, Connecticut. On Friday, December 14th, I actually received an email from Carl, who had left for lunch, and it was about 1:14, and he simply said, turn on your TV. There's been a school shooting at 27, my dad. So, I quickly went into the conference room and turned on the TV. Up to that point, I'd been in meetings all morning, I hadn't heard a word. So, we watched the TV coverage, and at the same time that we were watching this horror unfold, I received two calls from our police chief, Michael Murphy, very supportive, again, calling at 1:30 to make sure I had heard. It was right on the heels of Carl arriving and viewing this with me. And then he called again at 2:15, and he said, Kathy, what time is dismissal? He had missed the element, the middle school and the high school, but there was a police presence at the elementary dismissal on Friday. He just felt compelled to show support for what was taking place and to assure parents that, you know, we were aware, and the police department was working with the school department very closely to provide safety and security. On Friday afternoon, I, it was just overwhelming with the emotions that we were all feeling. I felt compelled to compose an alert now letter and send it to parents and faculty just to connect and to just express the feelings about this tragedy and to reinforce the strong sense of community and care that exists here in North Reading, and to also provide some tips for parents and teachers when talking to children about violent acts, such as what happened on Friday. And in fact, we actually posted these tips from the National Association of School Psychologists to our websites so that parents could access those, but we gave them that information in the letter that was sent out Friday afternoon as an email attachment to an alert now message. Over the weekend, there were many emails between superintendents on the superintendent list served, as well as from state organizations, and Chief Murphy and I kept in regular contact each of the days of the weekend to talk about some next steps. And then, on Sunday, I decided to send a follow-up letter to parents and faculty to emphasize the close working relationship that we do have with our safety officials, the police and the fire departments, to let parents know and to reassure them that we have very strong emergency protocols in place, and those are practiced regularly in our schools. And as we have in the past, we will continue to review our safety plans and align them with best practices. Just today, again, I was speaking with Chief Murphy, and we were talking about moving forward with the next steps. He's waiting to hear back some of the details that will come from the analysis of what did take place, as well as the actions of the initial responders, so that there's something to be gained, even from a horrible, terrible event like what happened on Friday, we can learn what worked, what didn't work, and how we can apply those lessons to what we do in all of our cities and towns and our school districts across the state and across the country and the world for that matter. On Sunday, I also sent out an email to the principals because we needed to make sure that we had a coordinated, articulated plan for our response and to be ready and prepared for the return of our faculty and our students today on Monday. On Monday, I also, we also had today a police presence in all of the schools, and that was indicated in the letter to parents on Sunday, so that nobody would be alarmed when they arrived at the schools today and they saw the police on sight. But again, they felt compelled to show support for the school district and be part of this unified response to safety and security for our students. unified response to safety and security for our students. So we talked, in that email that I sent to the principals on Sunday, we talked about the police presence. There were faculty meetings that were held before the students arrived. Again, they reviewed the tips that we sent out about how to speak to the students, particularly our youngest students who may have seen or heard something. We had really hoped that parents shielded students from the media coverage over the weekend because it was nonstop. But we knew that sometimes children have questions, and they ask those questions of adults that they trust. So we wanted to be prepared to be able to respond to that. So those tips were reviewed. Emergency protocols were also reviewed. They're issued every year. We have a multi-leveled pamphlet that is issued that encapsulates our emergency response plan. Every staff member receives it, every principal reviews it at the beginning of the year, and we just reiterated to go back to make sure that you are intimately familiar with this emergency response protocol. And we also talked about, any comments, questions, or concerns that faculty or parents had? We want to compile all of this feedback that we get from parents in the community, from our faculty, from community members, and we'll present that and review that with our Administrative Council, with the Police Department, and with the school committee, to talk about some next steps. I know at our Administrative Council meeting in January, the Chief of Police is very interested in coming back together and reviewing our emergency protocols. He knows what these are, he's reviewed them, he says they're very strong, they represent a regional response because we have, what are they called, a coordinated response should we need mutual aid. So mutual aid is predicated on having a regional response to emergencies. So it's comforting also to know that the best practices that are in place here in North Reading are also in place in all of those communities that provide mutual aid to North Reading. But we want to make sure we're vigilant. It's unfortunate, but one of the things that takes place when a tragedy occurs is that you need to go back right away and take a look at your safety protocols and make sure that they're meeting all of the best, best practices that are in place. So we'll continue to move forward, and we again have, as Wayne mentioned today, a FOB system, a security system, in all of our schools. We all use that FOB system to gain access. I've been receiving a lot of suggestions from parents, and we'll take a look at those. Some of them will be easier to implement than others. They range from replacing windows with bulletproof glass to having conversations about other ways, to have a presence at the doors, sign-in sheets that are right at the door as opposed to in the office, if the office isn't right at the entrance. So we're going to take a look at all of these suggestions that people are making, and review each and every one of them, and see how we can strengthen what we already have as a very strong emergency protocol in place in the North Reading Public Schools.
Any questions?
I'd just say that, again, I think we have probably as good a working or close relationship with the Police Department in our town as any school department has anywhere. I know some school departments and police departments are almost estranged because they, the school department doesn't want the police involved. We have an excellent relationship, and I think it's only going to get better with Chief Murphy. The only thing I'd suggest is that recommendations we get from the public, that we pass those by the Police Department, and we figure out what things make sense and what things don't make sense, because unfortunately, at times like this, you can get some really radical types of suggestions. So we've got to be able to sort those out. But I think you're right, Kathy, that the important thing is that the protocols are in place, and that everybody, staff, faculty, and students know exactly what they're supposed to do when the time comes to have to do something like that, so.
Any others? Just thank you for your quick response. I think that was, I know I had a lot of parents comment that it was comforting to get that email, so. Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to hopefully quickly complete the previous executive session we had to discuss potential litigation.
Second.
Jerry?
Aye.
Cliff?
Karen?
Aye.
Michael? Kevin was up. Mike?